Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I call the order to the Shreveport City Council Work Session. The Chair will give the invocation and Councilman Corbin, would you so kind to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand. Almighty God, we come to you today, Lord, with a thankful heart. And we pray today, O God, for Mayor Tyler's family, pray for Councilman Bradford's mother, pray, God, that you will, just your healing hand, Lord, we pray, will be touched their lives. Comfort them, O Lord. I pray, O God, for this city. I pray that you will bind Satan down and the violence will stop and that we will see peace, God, and I pray for peace. I pray now, Lord, for this time of the season, those of us that are less fortunate, God, that we will learn to have a heart that will reach out to them, comfort them, and provide them with things that they need, especially food and clothing. Now, I pray forgiveness for my sins and I pray now that you will bless this meeting in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the robe?
Councilman Bradford. Councilman Everson.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
President.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
President.
Ms. woman Lee. Councilman Bowden.
Here.
Tomorrow, with excitement, I will be searching for an motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilman Everson. I believe he has some guests that he'd like to bring forth.
I do. I wanted to recognize the, thank you, Chairman. I wanted to recognize the group from the Shreveport Waterworks Museum. They, you know, have been doing a wonderful job of carrying on that facility. Earlier this year, we sort of found out, obviously, the state's had a lot of troubles and realignments and they were not going to be able to continue to keep that facility open, but it is one that is very important to our community. And so, the city, thank you very much to Mayor Tyler and her leadership in that, was able to step in to help make sure that the doors didn't close and that it continued to operate. I recently attended an event that they had there and it was a diverse crowd of people of different ages, different parts of town. Everybody just really enjoying that unique, unique facility. And they asked for the opportunity to come and give us a little update and say a little thanks, and I said, "I would love to hear it." So, I'd like to invite them back.
Mayor and council members, thank you so much for this opportunity. Behind me are some of the members of our Friends Group. It is the very long McNeil Street Pumping Station Preservation Society. We have a hard time remembering that, so we just call it the Friends of the Waterworks Museum. And these are some of the people who volunteer their time to keep this wonderful facility active, open, and going. And it is because of the mayor, and it is because of all of you on the council, that we are active and open and going. All of you remember, about this time last year, the Secretary of State gave us a gift that none of us particularly wanted, and that was the return of the Waterworks Museum to the city of Shreveport. And it was a surprise. The city had not budgeted for it, had not planned for it, had not prepared for it. Turned to the Friends, the Friends came to see the mayor. It was a great partnership, very much public and private. And so, the Friends have been managing, running, and keeping the museum open for the past year. But, the mayor took that first big step. We appreciate it so much. But then you came in and you took the next big step, which was you gave us that very generous civic appropriation that allowed us, for this first year, to get our feet on the ground, to start considering fundraising and all those things that we're going to need to do to keep the doors open and keep the lights on. So, I just want to thank you so much. Dale Ward, also a volunteer, and I'm going to tell you this, for years I've been on the Board at that museum, I always thought he was paid. Dale's never been paid. Dale has always done this for free, but he put so much time and effort into it, I always thought he was a paid staffer. So, I'm going to ask Dale to introduce some of the members who are here with us today.
Thank you, Liz. Should I ask for a raise?
We'll give you one.
Double your salary.
As Liz mentioned, my name is Dale Ward and I'm the volunteer executive director for the McNeil Street Pumping Station Preservation Society. I've been doing this since 1999, when the Preservation Society was formed.
Just a bit. Okay.
Okay. The Preservation Society was formed in 1999 and we've been around ever since then at the pumping station, working on the preservation and development, the support of the museum and the other operations out there. And we've always been a support role, first for the city, before the city turned it over to the state, and then later on for the state. So, our position as the operator of the Shreveport Waterworks Museum is anew and farce, and as Liz said, we're hard at work getting our feet on the ground to fulfill that new role. But we'd like to thank all of you for making that possible. We've had a great first year. I think we're gonna, well, there's no doubt about it, we've already done it, we're gonna set a new attendance record for the museum for the calendar year 2017. The state should be jealous. So, I think we're having a really good year and we're looking forward to the next year. And I'd like to introduce these other folks that came to say thank you as well. First, we've got Paul Williams, who is a member of our Board of Directors and has been for quite some time. We've got Nettie Brown. Nettie's a former employee of the Water Department of the city of Shreveport and offers us some advice and technical expertise in that way. She's been a board member for quite a while as well. Then we have next to Nettie, Maria Schmelz. Maria is the Assistant Director of the Shreveport Waterworks Museum. She's one of the few folks that come around to help that aren't volunteers, but we're glad to have Maria around. She's part-time, like our other part-time employee. As with the state, we can't afford full-time employees. The state never had a full-time employee on the site either. And then, of course, you know Liz, and we've got here also James Moore. James Moore is another longtime Director of the Board of Directors. So, thank you for your help, and as I said a moment ago, we're looking forward to a bright future in cooperation with the city of Shreveport.
And we have a little something for you. So, board members, if you will grab those bags, and the city council members, except Mr. Everson, who was there for us at Food Truck at the museum, in these bags, I would like to show you, these are the most unique and creative coasters, and each of them has a photograph of something from the museum on it. These were produced especially for you by Jen Driscoll, who is a local artist here in Shreveport. These are really very cute, and then Maria is going to be passing by with an update, which is our latest newsletter. Oh, that one goes to the mayor, please, Nettie, if you will. And somebody might be missing some coasters, so we'll make sure that everybody has some. Our latest newsletter and just a small thank you. Now, you will notice that some of these thank you cards have a little bit of smudging on them, and that's because we had them out that day at Food Truck at the museum, and it was really windy and dirty that day, so just ignore anything that you would see on, that would be of a smudge variety. So, we'd love to invite you to come visit us. If you've not been to the Waterworks Museum or you've not been there lately, please come out and see us. We consider ourselves one of the shining spots of the city of Shreveport and especially of downtown Shreveport. Are there any questions at all that you have for us? Thank you so much, Councilman Everson. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, council, for your continued support, and come see us.
Thank you. May I, may I, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say to Ms. Swain and the other Board of Directors, thank you so much. Thank you for what you do, to make sure that Shreveport has a great museum in the McNeil Pumping Station, Waterworks Museum. And all you volunteers, God bless you. Without you, we could not have that gem over there. And so, it was just, it was a privilege for me to be able to step in and say, "Don't close it." Work something with us. And they were able to do that, but because of your hard work and your efforts, we were able to get it done this year, and you're showing that it works. So, thank you all so much for what you do.
Thank you for believing in us. Thank you all.
And for anyone, just as an aside, who hasn't had a chance to tour this facility or go out there, it is so cool. It is a, you know, water treatment plant that still looks much the way something would have 100 years ago. There are very few examples of this type of thing left in the country, and, you know, when we were out there for this event they had recently, they had, like I say, people of all different ages. Some people were just enjoying the nice weather and the pretty surroundings. Some people thought it was a good setting for Instagram pictures. Other people were, you know, just fascinated by the engineering and the kids. It was so interesting to see these children running around, seeing these, you know, machinery working in ways that was able to, you know, connect a little science to real life for them and bring in some history as well. So, it's just a really, an interesting, interesting place, and so, for those who haven't visited, put it on your list.
Before we continue, I'd like to make a little announcement to the members of the council and the mayor. Some of our fans out there in the world say that they can't hear us, and IT has asked me to be sure. All of yours is kind of pointed up, I'm not sure.
I'm not talking at the moment.
Okay. I got it. Thank you very much. Any other council member at this time? Mayor Tolic?
I just have one announcement today. We'll have some others tomorrow. This afternoon, at 6 o'clock, out at Independent Stadium in the Skybox, we will be having the team announcement for our 2017 Walk On Independence Bowl. And so, we're asking council members, if you can, please come out to support that team announcement. Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving to reports, anybody have any questions? Mr. Terrence Green? Okay, Mr. Green, I don't see any on the board here. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Crawford, your report came out.
Yes, sir.
Just absolutely exceptional. I saw where Councilman Jenkins sent you a Merry Christmas on your email, so.
Look for another one of those this year.
Mr. Bradford has given us the sickly, sure it's an honor to quote, but it's getting better. Okay, Ms. Thompson, we'll ask tomorrow for, on the public hearing that we have planned, you want to explain that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We advertised for the public hearing to be held on tomorrow and for the ordinance to be adopted tomorrow. However, that was an error. It should have said the 22nd of the month. We have re-advertised, it will, the first advertisement will run tomorrow and the second one on the 21st, to say that it will be, that public hearing will be on the 22nd and that it can be adopted on the 22nd. So, tomorrow, we would ask the chairman to determine if anybody is here who came to speak at that public hearing, and if so, to open the public hearing, to allow them to speak, and then to close the public hearing and postpone it until December the 22nd. If nobody is here to speak, we would still ask you to postpone it until December the 22nd.
Okay, Ms. Thompson, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Crawford, will there be any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, we have some folks that have signed up to speak about the disparity study, and we're, the council is, we normally don't do that, but we're gonna grant that today, so I'm giving, ask the vice chair to control the time, and we'll hear them at this time.
First round, Mr. Larry Ferdinand. Do you want to state your name and address for the record, please?
All right, thank you. Trying to lose my voice, but I'll hang it here the best I can. Larry Ferdinand, I'm chairman of Cato Democratic Paris Executive Committee, 3436 Galaxy Lane, Shreveport, 71119. I'm here in support of the disparity study, I think it's ordinance 106, amendment two, Mr. Chairman, other members of the council, and the mayor. Pardon me for any personal reference, but that's the best I could do sometimes, try to make a point. But when I was elected to this body back in April of 1984, when I came on, the late Hillary Huckabee was already advocating for a disparity study. At that time, the estimate for disparity study was running between $40,000 and $50,000. Another thing happened in 1984, that there was a report called Mount Auburn and Associate that was published. And when this report was issued, it recommended several things. One thing was a biomedical research center, because data was available to show that approximately, if you invest a dollar, you'll get approximately $13 in return. So, the foundation was established in 1986. It also said we was missing out on millions of dollars from right here at Barksdale and the Air Force Base in England when it was around. So, just about overnight, there was a unit set up in the Chamber of Commerce to take advantage of that, in other words, to help train the local businesses to learn how to do business with the Department of Defense. In this case, it was two Air Force bases, okay? It also said that we should have advanced manufacturing out at LSU S. So, that was a committee of faculty and staff and manufacturer leaders established to pursue that. Mr. Ken Weatherford, who was the Director of Manufacturing at the plant that I worked at, AT&amp;T Plant there, 9595 Mansfield Road, and they started pursuing that. But this report also recommended there were some things that needed to be done in the African-American community with dealing with the core, the core issues in the urban core, along with minority businesses. Then 10 years later, there was an update done by a local consultant, David Dodd, along with Mr. Ed Morrison, who helped with the Mount Auburn report. Ed Morrison was from Case Western Reserve. It essentially said the same thing. It commended the city leaders for pursuing the biomedical, which was up and running. It commended it also, the city leaders, for getting businesses from the Department of Defense, in this case, from the two Air Force bases. But it also said there was nothing significant being recommended for the urban core. When we look at other cities, New Orleans should be finishing that, if it's not already finished, they will be finishing their disparity study fairly soon.
You have three minutes.
That's all I have?
Yes, sir.
That's it? No extension?
We have a long list of people that would like to speak on this.
Okay. Well, sorry about that.
Just wrap it up.
Okay. Well, basically, all the data is there to show that we need to do something significant. If a doctor diagnoses a patient stage four cancer, he would not recommend a baby aspirin. We have some serious problem in the urban core, also with the African-American community not being able to create wealth. So, we need to really look at this. If we get a disparity study, it will set policy. In addition to that, it will stand court muster. So, I ask this council and this mayor to embrace that, so we can finally bring the African-American community in Shreveport into the mainstream and enable them to be able to create wealth. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gregory Shepherd. Tim Davenport. State your name and address for the record, Mr. Davenport. You have three minutes, sir.
Got you. Tim Davenport, 3568 Lakeside Drive in Shreveport, 71119. I just here briefly to speak about the Fair Share Program and how we've benefited from it. My company is Bug Stoppers Exterminating Company, Shreveport. We've been in business since 17 years, since the year 2000. We've been a part of Fair Share since 2001. It has greatly benefited us. We really have enjoyed it. Since that time, we started another company, I've become a licensed herbicide, lawn tech, weed fertilization company, has greatly benefited that company. We do work with property standards, streets and drainage, and it has caused that company to be a success. I'd like to just thank Ms. Barnes, she's been with us 100%. And what I'd like to say, she don't just point and just send you somewhere, she's right there with you every step of the way, and I appreciate it.
Does it benefit you from it?
I have. Yes, sir.
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I want to give a quick little timeline. I returned to Shreveport in 1994 as a pharmaceutical sales rep. I left Corporate America in 1995 to start doing the work that would help change public policy in the city of Shreveport and in Paris or Cato that would relate to African-American business owners and the African-American community starting to come into wealth generation so that we can move this city forward. In 1996, then councilman of District B, District G, Roy Barrio, asked me to begin the advocacy work on a disparity study that they were trying to push at that particular point in time. The vote initially went down, seven votes for the disparity study, zero votes against. This was with a 4-3 majority white council. The powers that be in the city talked to then-mayor Bo Williams and told him to unequivocally veto that legislation, because the disparity study is the trigger that would substantially help bring black business owners into contract procurement opportunities in the city of Shreveport. When the vote came back up, it was resoundly defeated, four white votes against, three black votes for. In 1998, me being the youngest person on the team with Councilman Harry Huckabee, Councilman Joe Shine, myself, Larry English, Willie Bradford, James Panell, we began to advocate for the Fair Share Program. The Fair Share Program that Ms. Barnes is over is a result of our work. This did not happen just osmosis, this happened based on the advocacy work. Then-mayor Keith High Tower had a one-page document. We forced that particular one-page into something comprehensive. The program has never been situated the way that it was supposed to be, that's the number one thing. It's supposed to be between 10 to 20 employees in that program. Now, Ms. Barnes does a good job over there in terms of what she can do, but this has nothing to do with Karen Barnes. This is about black business owners and other ethnic groups being able to participate in this particular system, and the disparity study is that trigger. I am in full support of that. It should have been done, but it definitely needs to be done, because the Supreme Court says that a factual predicate study needs to be conducted as it relates to looking at the systemic issues that relate to inequities as it relates to contract procurements. And I'll close with this, if you do an analysis of Atlanta, Georgia, right now, the city of Atlanta is basically 30, 43 years in its present state when Manu Jackson took office in 1974. And Manu Jackson began the push for economic parity for black businesses. And guess what is the contract procurement dollars going out right now for their airport? $6 billion. $6 billion being marketed as a city that embraces culture diversity, a city that embraces economic parity for all businesses, especially African-American firms, and Atlanta has just continued to grow. We have to get out of this mindset of restricting black businesses in this city. Thank you.
If you need me to use my mic, I will do it.
We need somebody to mic.
Is the mic not working? Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
Jonathan Crosby, 646 E70 First Street. I'm with Tim Davenport, laying in Wheaties. We've been doing this work here, and it's been a great benefit to us, and I guess to the city also for the work that we do. I just want to say we thank you for allowing us to do this, and we also ask that we can continue to work for the city of Shreveport and do the things that's needed, and that's been a big benefit for us and for the city also. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shekka Harris. Please state your name and address for the record, please, Ms. Shekka.
My name is Ms. Shekka Harris. I live at 135 Dazzell Street, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Three minutes for the record.
Okay. Madam Mayor, council, I came to speak about the Fair Share Program and how it's benefited me and my company. I'm a minority businesswoman, and I have been the better part of 20 years. The process by which I have become one of the, mostly of you all even with me, but how I get there is that it's competitive. She doesn't call me first, she normally calls me last. A lot of the budgeting and monies that goes into the program has greatly benefited us, because we're one of the most reasonable companies that are here in Shreveport. You get a good product for a good price. So, I thank you all so much for the Fair Share Program, and those who have supported it, because I know everyone's not on board to support it, but I have greatly been blessed by it and will continue to do business with the city of Shreveport and hope to see you all at future events. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Pitts. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Pitts. I'm known here locally on the radio as Ferrari Fox. I live at 2319 Roosevelt in Shreveport. I've never been to a city council meeting, this is so exciting, but I'm nervous at the same time. I was asked to come and just relay just a little bit of information on how our business has benefited because of the Fair Share Program of the city of Shreveport. I've been attending all of the meetings. I've been attending the meetings where they are pursuing the disparity study, you know, and I've also been to the meetings where we were allowed to obtain certificates and certifications from the state of Louisiana that we didn't know anything about, had not been for the Fair Share Program. Every time I attend the meetings, I never, I'm noticing the trend behind the disparity study is to make sure that one group of people is given a better chance. I thought that the Fair Share Program, because I've never heard, I've never heard Ms. Karen come to us and say that it is just here to help minority business. It is here to help businesses that are at a certain point in their business where they need growth. They need a chance to have a level playing field, which is exactly what they did for us. We've been in business, now we own, by the way, we own a security company called Guardian CPP, my husband and I, Donnie Pitts. And in 2012, when we began business, we were the only two employees that we had. We became Fair Share certified in 2016, and since then, because of a competitive bid process, we've been allowed to hold three of, three contracts with the city of Shreveport. Our business has gone from two employees to providing gainful employment for 19 tax-paying voting citizens here in Shreveport. And all of this has come because of the growth and the information and the invaluable service that we've received from the Fair Share Program. Now, it's not my, but see, I'm a taxpaying citizen, so I believe that when I come and ask for the mic, I have an opportunity to share how I feel about it. I see disparity studies all over the place. I see them in Atlanta, I see them in New York, I see them in New Orleans. They don't always lead to legislation. And since I am a taxpaying citizen, I would just think that if we had $300,000 or $500,000 to spend to study, to see if businesses are having a hard time, they're having a hard time all over the country, not just in Shreveport, why not take that money and invest that money into the Fair Share Program so that they can do a greater work? We're also Fair Share certified in Lake Charles and Baton Rouge, and those areas don't have an office with one person in it, working themselves to the bone trying to help businesses. Those offices have a staff, and we've been able to, you know, become friends with business owners that are there that have really grown their business because of the same program here in Shreveport, but they can tell you how that, that whole staff is able to help them. I can, I'm just here to say just the same thing everyone else has said before, that the Fair Share Program has really changed our business, and we're just very glad to be doing business with the city of Shreveport. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know that voice, I know that he's up for Roger Fox. Back the gates.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Gates, 94, 02, Monwood Circle. I don't know why I feel like I'm in court. But I'm, I've been with the Fair Share Program this year, first year, and I do work for property standards, the Lucas Lift Stations, I cut all the lift stations, I do lawn services, I think I missed that. And I also am a sub with major contracting who's actually tearing up all over the city. The Fair Share Program, of course, has helped me. I don't get in, no one person I believe gets any favoritism, but what I will say, when she sent a mass email out with eighty-some people on it, and she said, "You need to do this, 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 contact these people," it's all how you could talk to these people. She can't get you the job, you got to go out and talk to these people yourself. So, I mean, if you're not able to talk to people, if you're not able to talk for yourself and your company, you don't get no work. If you, it's all who could talk the best game, let's be honest. Not a game, but y'all know how it go. So, that's, that's just my thing, the Fair Share Program has helped me tremendously, and I appreciate the program, I appreciate Karen Barnes for her hard work, she will walk you through certain things, but on certain things, she's like, "You got to do it yourself." Yes, ma'am, I'm on it. So, my first year, and look forward to many, many more.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Tyler. My name is Brandon Foster, me and my wife Marilyn, we're the owners of Brandon's Auto Collegiate Center at 4001 Greenwood Road. The Fair Share Program has been such a blessing to us, we've been able to provide the resources that we need in this business, which has allowed us to hire, at this time, we have five employees. It has also allowed us to do things for us having kids go back to school, backpacks, and giving to help our local schools buy books and things that they need for less fortunate kids. And I brought that out because if it wasn't for the Fair Share Program allowing us the opportunity to make the resources that we needed, we wouldn't be able to do that. Before, I'll quick, the most beneficial thing that I have to say that the Fair Share Program has done for us since we've been a part of it, and I call it Kenny Houston, because Kenny Houston was a sixteen-year-old kid whom, when we met him, he was on the corner of County Market with a pistol in his pocket, asking for dollars and ready to take advantage of anyone who he seen a sign of weakness in. He approached my wife, and she told him, "Go down and talk to my husband, and he'll give you a job." At this time, Kenny could not benefit my business at all because he had no experience in painting bodywork. He came and he seen police cars in our shop, and he was, he got nervous right away because he was a kid who was homeless, his parents had left him, and like I said, he was on the streets, ready to take advantage of anybody who he saw a sign of weakness in. Because I had the resources to bring this kid on and train him and show him a better way, in less than six months, Kenny was able to go to school, we got him into the Goodwill Program, we got him an ID, we got him a place to live, we showed him a trade that would stick with him for the rest of his life, and six months later, Kenny was having a high school diploma or GED, he had his GED. He's able to do things in this trade that he learned in six months that it took me ten years to accomplish. And I brought that out because as me being a young black business owner, seeing this kid and seeing myself once in his shoes, it opened my heart up to give him that opportunity. And now, he's one of our best employees, and it was all done because we had the resources to bring this kid in and say, "Here, here's a chance," as so many of our kids need. So I think that's one thing that is so important and so powerful, not only in the minority businesses, but also in the minority communities, to open a door for these kids that's waiting to cause destruction in our streets, get them something to do to get them off the streets. And we're able to do that because of the opportunity that we have with the Fair Share Program. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, we have no executive appointments be considered tomorrow, and there are no items under the consent agenda in conjunction, Mr. Crawford, let's continue.
Yes, sir, under consent agenda legislation to adopt ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 2001 authorizes the acceptance of a grant of twenty-five thousand dollars from AEP SWEPCO. This is for the Army Reserve Building at the downtown airport to provide energy-efficient lights as part of a grant that they are securing. Resolution 202 authorizes the donation of Shreveport Police Department's surplus properties, specifically retiring one police K-9.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, we're under resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution 189 ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, for the purposes of submitting to the qualified voters of the city propositions to authorize the continuation levy and collection of special ad verum taxes therein, and to also authorize the city to continue to levy and collect a special ad verum tax for the continuation and maintenance of a police three platoon system originally authorized by Article 14, Section 12 of Louisiana Constitution of 1921, making application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Resolution 196 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the city of Shreveport and A.B. Glenn Properties LLC, hereinafter called Owner, and acting herein through Robert Aiello for the Southern Loop Common Sanitary Sewer Mains and Related Apprendices and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Resolution 197 authorizes the mayor to execute an accepted act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Laney F. Landing LLC, hereinafter called Owner, and acting therein through Kenneth G. Lawler, its member manager, for the private sanitary sewer and water main extension and related facilities to serve Lakeshore Harbor Estates. Mr. Chairman, tomorrow, the administration will ask for a postponement of 197 until the next council meeting. Resolution 198 employing professionals with respect to the proposing issuance of not exceeding fifty million dollars of grant obligation funding bonds for the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, for the purposes of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bond Series 2011. Resolution 199 authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Napoli Skolnick, PLLC, and Kenneth M. Carter, APLC. This is for the opioid litigation that we had talked about earlier. Resolution 200 stating the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Brentwood Acquisition Shreveport Inc. to participate in the benefits of Louisiana Restoration Tax Treatment Program, this is the program that Mr. Thompson had talked to you about earlier, being postponed for adoption until the 22nd, the next council meeting. Resolution 203 authorizes the mayor to dedicate the 5800 block of Leadbetter Street in honor of Dr. Joe Roscoe Grant, Jr.
And I would like to just make sure the council knows that tomorrow Pastor Grant will be here with us, and so we'll be, have a chance to present this. He has been a longtime excellent leader in that community, both Hollywood and Caddo Heights areas and around the community, so it'll be a lot of fun to give him some recognition.
I have a question for Attorney Bradford, if I might. And I may have asked this before, so I apologize, I'm getting confused on all my contractors here. So, Resolution 199, what is our rationale for being involved in that case as a city? I mean, big picture.
So, just big picture, not getting into any kind of privileged information, generally speaking, Mrs. Polly's participating in this litigation because they've either donated or designated resources or utilized resources for the purposes of combating, combating crime or drug addiction within their community, specifically as it relates to opioid use.
Okay, so in theory, the police department's efforts would be big picture EMS. Because obviously, we don't have healthcare necessarily under us, but just needed a little bit of the link. Okay, thank you.
You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Introduction of Resolutions not to be adopted prior to December 22nd, 2017. Resolution 204 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the city of Shreveport and Silver Point LLC, hereinafter called Owner, and acting therein through Margaret Mayet, manager for the water and sewer main and related apparatuses to serve Silver Point at Lakeside Unit Number One. And Resolution 205 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the McNeil Street Pumping Station Preservation Society for the purposes of defining the management and use of the Shreveport Water Works Museum, providing for a continuation of services. Any questions? There are no introduction of ordinances. Ordinances on second reading and final passage, these are the Capital Projects ordinances. Ordinance Number 104 adopting the 2018 Capital Projects Fund Budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. Do we normally read the amendment?
I think they need to know that there is an amendment in case there are any questions about it.
I can, I can, I just have to pull it up as we go.
This amendment substitutes the ordinance that was on the agenda for the attached ordinance, which has all of the new projects up to date.
Right, it's an amendment from the administration that we offer every year, so everything that's happened in Capital Projects from the time that the mayor submitted her executive budget, the last day of September until now, we've updated that, so we would ask for your support there. Ordinance 105 adopts the 2018 Riverfront Development Fund Budget, there are no amendments there. 106 adopts the 2018 General Fund Budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. There are three.
Four.
There are four now budget amendments. I'm sorry. Amendment Number One is offered by Councilman Jenkins to Ordinance 106 of 2017, the ordinance adopting the 2018 General Fund. This takes the, and decreases the MPC transfer from General Fund by one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred dollars equitable to the MPC study, where the city has seventy-five percent of the budget and the parish has, they're twenty-five percent responsible thereto. Resolution Number Two is Councilman Bradford's resolution, Amendment Number Two is Councilman Bradford's amendment decreasing the operating reserves by three hundred thousand dollars for funding of a disparity study. Amendment Number Three is Councilman Flurry's amendment, this decreases the MPC by three quarters or taking eight hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars and leaving a quarter the first three months of the 2018 in the account. And Amendment Number Four from Councilman Bowman removes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund operating reserves to pay for the employees' three percent in healthcare increases for 2018, allowing the employees to enjoy all five percent of their raises should the budget go through. Ordinance 107 adopts, I'm sorry.
May I interrupt now? I worry that if I go back, we're going to be fifteen deals later. It's okay. Question Number One. If, just so I'm clear, your two seventy is a million and eighty divided by four?
It's a quarter of, it's a quarter of what the city normally contributes.
It's eight twelve. What's that?
It's eight, eight hundred and twelve thousand.
It's two hundred and seventy, eight hundred, two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fifty is what would be remaining in there of the city's contribution.
Yes, but the one quarter, I, if his was in line with my budget amendment, it would be two hundred and two thousand and not two seventy, right? Okay, that's what I want to make clear is that the two seventy's over the ten eighty, number ten eighty-three, or whatever the original one million and eighty-three dollar.
That's correct. His is on the originally submitted budget from the mayor, yours is based on the study itself and then taking a quarter from there.
Okay. Number, the request for the administration, can you give us kind of the increase in healthcare for 2015, 2016, and 2017? For obvious reasons, I just want to make sure that we're clear that if we pass this, how much potentially it could go up next year for all, all the individuals that are paying into this?
Sure.
And then, more importantly, something that was mentioned earlier, if we change it here, then are we having to change it in each one of the departments themselves?
No, what we'll do is we'll move the money into general government to cover those, and so we don't, we don't have to shift every other budget.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to mention, I think it's theoretically possible for the council to adopt Amendment Number One and Amendment Number Three. And if that would happen, I think we would add those two together and it would leave about seventy-five thousand dollars, is that right, in the MPC budget?
For the first quarter.
Okay, I get it, but clearly, if we passed one and then passed the third one, probably one of us would make, either move, either, I would, somebody would have to drop there, I mean, because seventy-five does absolutely nothing.
I just want everybody to know that if both of them are adopted, then that would be a real issue for the MPC.
Good. Mr. Chairman, 107 adopts the 2018 retained risk budget. Ordinance 2008 adopts the 2018 Metropolitan Planning Commission Fund Budget.
That's Ordinance 108.
I'm sorry, Ordinance 108, you'll, you'll see the two amendments, the companions for those that were just read in 106 General Fund Budget, the ordinance for, the companion for Amendment Number One is the decreasing the General Fund Transfer, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred dollars, and the companion for the General Fund Number Three is Amendment Number Two of this ordinance decreasing the General Fund Transfer of eight hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. Ordinance 109 adopts the 2018 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 110 adopts the 2018 Grant Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 111 adopts the 2018 Shreveport Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 112 adopts the 2018 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 113 adopts the 2018 Golf Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 114 adopts the 2018 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 115 adopting the 2018 Water and Sewerage Fund Budget. Ordinance 116 adopts the 2018 Budget Funding Contractual Services provided to Sportran by Metro Management Associates Incorporated. Ordinance 117 adopts the 2018 Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 119 adopts the 2018 Convention Center Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 119 adopts the 2018 Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund Budget, you will see one amendment there, clerical error, the original numbers that were submitted there were for redundancy for 2017, that's been corrected to put the 2018 numbers in there, just a clerical error, it's been corrected. Ordinance 120 adopts the 2018 Debt Service Fund Budget Amendment One, reduces the debt service collection for GOB millage from eighteen point one-six to sixteen mills, reducing the operating reserves by three million, fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars offered by Councilman Jenkins.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
By the way, just so we're clear, that isn't reducing the operating reserve of General Fund. It is reduce, just so that we're very clear, it is only debt service we're talking about.
Correct.
That revenue which can only be used to service GOB bonds, the sixteen mills, basically is incorporating, assuming we do this advanced refunding, it takes into the, some gains there and some other stuff that roll off, probably about ninety percent of that, and really, what it does is starts weeding away of what we have a significant reserve in, and in 2020, when a lot of the GOB rolls off, then it's still very manageable and we don't end up with four or five years of reserves when it drops down to about fourteen million in debt service. So, that's that. I would, I meant to ask one other thing, based on our meeting earlier on Ordinance 114, either are we going to get an amendment for that? Okay, good to go.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. What we have there?
One nineteen.
Okay, we're on one twenty. Our ordinance one twenty, adopting the two thousand and eighteen Debt Service Fund Budget, we just talked about that. One twenty-one adopts the two thousand and eighteen Street Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance one twenty-four adopts the two thousand and eighteen Downtown Development Authority Budget. Ordinance one forty-two amends Chapter one oh two Vehicles for Hire Article three A Operating Regulations, Section one oh two dash eighty-eight of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to transportation network companies. Ordinance one forty-three amends the two thousand and seventeen budget for the General Fund. That is, let's see, one forty-three. That is for internal audit, seventeen thousand, five hundred moving from materials and supplies to contractual service for maintenance and repairs. One forty-four amends the two thousand and seventeen Community Development Special Re- then these next three, one forty-four, one forty-five, and one forty-six, the administration is gonna ask for a postponement of all three of those to be moved to the December twenty-second meeting. That will allow us to bring those up to date. Those are all from the state auditors that require all special revenue funds not be more than five percent from the final adopted budgets. We want to make sure that we've got the absolute latest figures in there to be able to do that. So, one forty-four doing that, amends the two thousand and seventeen Community Development Special Fund Budget. One forty-five amends the, hang on a second. Well, my thing just went away. I've lost my. One forty-five, one forty-five amends the two thousand and seventeen Downtown Entertainment Economic Development District Special Revenue Fund Budget. One forty-six amends the two thousand and seventeen Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. One forty-seven amends the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, two thousand and seventeen General Fund Budget, and that is to move two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from personal services to improvements in equipment, to purchase equipment at a considerable savings over waiting until next year for IT equipment for the city. Ordinance one forty-eight provides for the issuance and sale of not exceeding fifty million dollars of general obligation revenue, revenueing bonds, series two thousand and eleven of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form of fixing the details and providing for the right of the owners thereof, providing for the repayment of such bonds and the application of the proceeds thereof to the refunding of the city's general obligation bond, series two thousand and eleven. Ordinance one forty-nine amending and reenacting certain provisions of Chapter ten, Chapter sixty-two, and Chapter seventy-eight of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to allowing open containers and public outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages in designated downtown areas, which include sidewalk cafes or bistros adjacent to certain premises, and to allow open containers and outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages citywide to include on city property when a lawful local city temporary special event alcohol permit is obtained, and to allow for an applicant to apply for a local city temporary special event alcohol permit in any area within the city of Shreveport.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ordinance one forty-eight, I've had several discussions with Ms. Mogul, and provided invaluable information, certainly appreciate the information that she's shared with me. And, you know, just would like some consideration. I understand Loop's been designated as the lead, but for the two local firms that have offices here, just some opportunity to participate in that sale. Not as the lead, but some allocation. And if there's a reason why they can't do it, got it, but I'd like that at least to come across her desk.
On this one forty-nine, is that the, what we've been holding on the table for quite some time?
It is, but it's a little bit expanded, and Karen has been providing some information to Jerry and I. I, I might be interested in a slight revision of this or a slight amendment of it. However, generally, it's accomplishing not only what we have been talking about, which is being able to allow for these kind of sidewalk cafe areas to be permitted, but also, you know how oftentimes somebody will go and they'll get this special permit from the police department for an event, but then they have to come to us for a separate thing that, that, you know, if it's outside. This just sets parameters for that and allows them to skip that step, having the police department approve it, instead of it coming to the council for a separate approval. And there are some other aspects to this, but please take a look at it, let us know what you think. I mean, these are some kind of progressive things, largely in line with what we've been voting for anyway, so it shouldn't be, it's not terribly different than what we kind of tend to be, be doing in, in practice. But I would appreciate everybody's input on it, and given that it is a budget lease, you know, I realize that we need to postpone this to take a little deeper look at it. That's not gonna derail anything, you know, don't feel, we're under no pressure to have to pass this tomorrow. So, if there is some interest in postponing it a little bit so we can better digest it when we don't have the full budget ahead of us, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Thompson?
We're not aware of any table legislations coming off, Mr. Chairman. We do have one property standards appeal.
Okay.
From, this was a postponement from the December eleventh meeting, four oh one Spring Street. Councilman Everstyn's familiar with this case.
I am, and Terrence, I don't know if you want to go ahead and give a presentation, if you have something, but if not, I have been in contact with the owner of the property. This is that one where, you know, it has a major roof problem on it. The cost of demolition on this, though, is extravagant, plus we would lose a historic building in downtown, so we talked with the owner about initiating a sale of the building to somebody who would be able to have the resources to fix it. They have been working towards that, and I believe the actual party who's seeking to acquire it has changed, but the goal is still the same, and they are continuing to communicate and provide some updates to the progress of that building. I know that they've recently met with Liz Swain as well, and I don't know if Liz wants to say a few words. I will say, I'm very comfortable in, in an effort to see that this building does get saved and has an opportunity to, you know, both for public safety and preservation of character and historic assets, that we postpone this for thirty days at least. I mean, I might be comfortable with sixty, but I kind of like the idea of coming back to it in a shorter period of time so that we can make sure we're not letting too much time get behind it. So, my motion would be for a thirty-day extension.
Second. Motion made, second. Any other discussions? Let's vote. Mayor, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I did, I just, I did miss part of that discussion. I know we had extended this, so I'm hoping we can get it resolved in thirty days.
In, in a short time, yeah. We, that's why I elected to do just the thirty day.
We've extended it and extended it, and I'm familiar with this case, so I'm hoping we can get it done, because, you know, I don't think we need to keep delaying it.
All right. Noah's discussion, let's vote. And motion passed. Is that all?
Yeah.
Property standards. Thank you, Ms. Ernie.
Yes, sir.
Very much. And there are no other appeals. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? And somebody give me a drum roll, we'll ask for clerk's report.
Expectation to.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to mention one thing. On ordinance one forty-nine, there is an amendment, I don't think that was mentioned, but it, that's my report.
I don't see one on it, but.
There is one on there. I had to refresh to see it.
That's good. Well, is there any other business for the council? Councilman Corbin.
I do have a question, and the answer is fine tomorrow, don't have to get it right now. And this is for Patrick Andor Barbera. And I'm stepping into Councilman Everstyn's district a little bit, I think. Line Avenue between King's Highway and Olive, is any of what's going on there and causing the zigzag of traffic, is any of that city-related, or is it all utility-related? Answer to the question is fine.
Also, also on Fairfield.
I mean, you're on line or Fairfield? It's the Fairfield one that's like, I mean, the holes are there for sure.
It's there on line as well. It's the same situation.
Yeah, we have to bring Patrick up in there, see if he can respond. If not, we'll get the answer for it.
Is there some of that right at Olive is private utility, but there is another barricade on Noah that could be a city job, and I'll look into it.
I do know that on, yeah, over on Olive, Fairfield, and probably on Fairfield, that, because I got a call about that one, that one is a private utility, but I don't know about a little further south than that, that maybe, there may be a city project there. I'm not sure, but there's definitely some of that is.
It's been in for a couple of weeks.
Some of that is center point, for sure.
I think it all may be.
Okay. And if it is a private utility, we'll, we'll check in with them also. You have a status? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other business for the council? Going once, going twice. How about that, Mayor?